Good evening and welcome to the October 5th, 2021 Gilren Central School District Board of Education meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and rise for the pledge?
The pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have an appointment of a new Board of Education member. So I'll read the Board President action item. It is hereby resolved that the Board of Education of the Gilren Central School District hereby appoint Kimberly Blasiak, effective October 5th, 2021, to fill the vacancy of the Board created by the resignation of Benjamin Goze. Set appointment to be until the next regular school district election, or as otherwise may be required by law. Set appointment shall commence immediately upon the individual filing an oath of office with the district clerk. Can I have a motion to approve? Blanca, second? Nay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye passes seven zero. Barb, did you raise your hand?
Yeah.
Okay, passes eight zero. Thank you. Next, we have the oath of office for the newly elected board member. Kim, do you have the oath in front of you? Yep, so you just have to read it out loud.
Do I have to like stand or anything?
No, you don't have to stand.
Stand on the Bible.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And then I think you have the board ethics guidelines to sign?
Yep.
We have a motion to approve? Blanca, second? Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Congratulations, Kim. Welcome. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our public comment portion of the meeting. Because it's been a while, I'll just share our policies that we follow for public meeting, our public comment section. Although state law doesn't require us to hold public comment, we have chosen to do so because it's crucial to hear from the community about their concerns and issues. Having said that, the Board is here to listen. Public comment is not a discussion. We take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have time, sufficient time to process and research the issues if need be. Therefore, please do not expect the Board to respond to your questions and concerns tonight. However, we will respond to your questions, concerns at either a future board meeting in an email, or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. Also, we are not allowed to take any comments or questions about school personnel. Instead, we had asked that you go through the appropriate administrative channels. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the Board directly rather than the audience. And Board will start public comment now for approximately thirty minutes, allowing three minutes per speaker. So we'll start first with the in-person public comment. So first I have Frank Ella. Okay. Frank shows up, we'll go back. Next, I have Juliana Vivento. And we have, the mic is right over at the podium.
Salma, would you be okay if I started?
Yeah.
Because I, we'll just kind of go in order with the, okay, thank you. They're a little nervous, so. We're not gonna all speak, I promise, just a few. Thank you to the Board of Education for allowing us to speak tonight to the community in support of the Capitol Project. We are the varsity field hockey team. This Capitol Project is much more than just the four percent, which will, which is the multi-sport turf field. This project helps make our schools safer and also enhances student experiences while at Gilderlin. I'm a physical education teacher first at Gilderlin. That is my full-time position, and I take great pride in saying I'm a member of the Health and PE Department. I have the pleasure of extending my workday every day as the field hockey coach, working with these amazing student athletes through athletics. When I look at the Capitol Project as a whole, for us, a turf field we can call home is a big deal. However, as a PE teacher in our district, I think for me, knowing our students could have new playgrounds and outdoor spaces to learn, like the pavilions, is both exciting and helps our students learn in the world around them. In the last two years, we have been forced for our own health and safety to rediscover our outdoor spaces. This Capitol Project helps provide a safer and healthier school environment for our students. Playground build core strength, teach balance, enhance students' cooperative skills, and promote healthy growth in our students. For field hockey, our sport can no longer be played safely on grass. When we play on grass, when we played on grass at Bethlehem a few weeks ago, several of the girls standing next to me had to duck or react to a ball traveling dangerously close to their head and our face. This was due to two factors. Number one, how the stick can undercut the ball on grass and raise in the air, and the second being how, how us, the second factor being how the ball can change direction due to uneven grass and field conditions. Lucky for us, these two factors do not exist when playing on a multi-sport turf field. The only time I worry for their safety is when we play our two away games on grass at Bethlehem and Niskiuna. Yesterday in the heavy downpour, all outdoor games and practices were canceled or postponed. The field hockey, varsity, and JV teams were the only two teams able to still have their games due to the fact that the turf field is still safe even in heavy rain. Niskiuna will be installing a new turf field in the near future, and Bethlehem will be voting on there soon. We fundraised to practice and play on turf because I wanted a safe way for our girls to play our sport, and playing on turf was the answer. I know that several members of our community are concerned about environmental impact a turf field can have. However, in my research, including a call to Chinango, which is a major distributor and builder of turf fields, I found that the infill of one turf field can remove up to 1.8 million plastic bottles from the ocean, according to the company Waste 360 and Chinango. This year, we as a program had to spend over $700 alone on paint for our field. I will reluctantly be adding to a landfill seventy-nine cans of empty paint bottles after our season since the turf we rent does not have sewn-in field hockey lines. This would change if we had a turf field here at Gilderlin. We would have sewn-in lines for all our teams, eliminating the need for paint.
Ms. Sykes, there's three minutes. Can you wrap up your comment?
Yes. The final fact I want you to leave with is that I've been coaching and playing on turf fields for thirty years with no adverse side effects to myself physically, and I also want to just really emphasize to the community that, again, this is four percent of the project. The project is so much more, but to us, we'd finally get to call Gilderlin our home. Thank you.
So is this Juliana Vivendio?
Yep. Hi, my name is Juliana Vivendio, and I am a junior here at Gilderlin High School. I have been a student athlete on our school's varsity field hockey team since I was a sophomore, as well as the varsity softball team since last year when I got pulled up for sectionals. Tonight, I would like to express my support for the Capitol Project, but especially the portion on the turf field and getting it approved. The turf field will benefit almost all of the sports programs at the high school, and it would create a safer environment for our athletes here at Gilderlin. By not having easy access to a sports facility like turf puts us at a disadvantage to our competition. As a multi-sport athlete at this school, I believe that having a turf field not only benefits field hockey, but also is in the best interest of many other sports at this school. The transition from winter to spring sports seasons is very difficult for our teams. During softball season, there are many times when bad weather like rain prevents us from practicing on our field. Dirt on a softball field gets sticky, muddy, and generates an injury-prone situation. This limits our choices with what to do for practices. Hitting fly balls and throwing becomes difficult inside due to the low ceilings and small spaces. Providing us with a turf field will alleviate the struggle of not being able to get outside because the fields aren't dry enough. The option to move our practice to the turf would allow us to get our practice time, which would lead to a better season for all of our sports teams here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Vivendio. We also have Elizabeth Schaefer.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Schaefer, and I'm a sophomore on the Gilderlin Varsity Field Hockey Team, as well as the Varsity Lacrosse Team. Our team has a disadvantage of not having turf at our school. This means we have to raise tens of thousands of dollars each year to pay to play on turf. This also means that we have no place to practice during the summer and offseason, or to hold open turfs to get ready for the next upcoming season. We have to rent field space at U Albany and Aframs when all the other teams in the suburban council hold open turfs free for grades seventh through twelfth at least two nights a week. Our team pays to play, we pay to compete, and we want to play at Gilderlin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Anna Dubum?
My name is Anna Dubum, and I'm a part of the Varsity Field Hockey Team. As you may know, over the past couple of years, we've been holding all our practices and games at Afram Sportplex by the Albany Airport instead of our home field at school. On a good day, that's a twenty-minute commute, which is rare considering school traffic. Getting both teams to games and practices on time is a miracle, considering the lack of convenience trying to shuttle all the way to our so-called home field. The time crunch we face daily could be avoided entirely if we could just play at our school like every other team in our section. On top of the lack of time to prepare for the beginning of practice, we are pressured on the other end as well. Yesterday's senior night required us both, required both us and our parents to jump through so many hoops just to ensure that it ran smoothly enough that we didn't go over our time limit on the field. Our parents had to leave work early to set up the entire event in less than half an hour because we can't play night games when they're off and work because other teams run right after us. Having our own turf at our own high school would eliminate both the stressful commute and the difficult game slash practice schedule. Having a true home field would give us not only peace of mind with our planning, but would grant us a competitive advantage as well. It's no secret that field turf greatly elevates, greatly elevates our play, and we can see that with our competitors. Schools like Niskiuna and Bethlehem that aren't lucky enough to have any turf are struggling to keep up with the speed of play when faced with away games on turf. At the beginning of the season, we barely beat Bethlehem with a score of three to two in overtime. Just Monday night, we won four to zero, giving up only three shots on goal while we had nineteen on theirs. This is a stark contrast in just a few weeks of being able to train on turf, which makes all the difference.
Thank you, Ms. Dubum. Has anybody else on the team signed up? Oh, okay. Thank you. Next, we have Mary Schmitz.
Just saying, three minutes is not very long, so. Get the hook ready. Good evening. My name is Mary Schmitz, and I'm a lifelong resident of Gilderlin. I'm retired from the Gilderlin Police, excuse me, and more recently retired from my second career as a TA at Gilderlin Elementary. My two daughters went through Gilderlin Schools. All three of us have coached Gilderlin High School sports. And my oldest daughter is currently a social worker at Farnsworth. Needless to say, our passion and love for this town and this district runs very deep. This Thursday, October 7th, is the referendum vote for Gilderlin Schools. While much or mostly the attention of a select group has been placed on the turf field, we all need to remember how very important all the improvements in the referendum are to all our students and therefore to all of us. I am retired, no children in school, on a fixed income, but these improvements are so vitally important to the future leaders of my community that I'm willing to spend the extra five dollars a month. That is why I encourage everyone to vote yes, and let me explain why. Let's address the elephant in the room, the turf field. The Federal Research on Recycled Tire Crumb Used on Playing Fields states the following: Quote, "In general, the findings from the report support the premise that while chemicals are present as expected in the tire crumb rubber, human exposure appears to be limited based on what is released into the air or simulated biological fluids." Does anyone really believe that Gilderlin, or any of the several school districts that already have turf, are intentionally trying to harm our children? Ten of fifteen schools in the suburban council have or will have synthetic turf fields in the next twelve months. Does anyone really believe that New York State would approve the use of turf on school property if it would cause serious harm to our children? Of course not. In fact, the New York State Education Department Turf Fact Sheet states, quote, "Studies have been conducted by the California EPA Agency of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment and the Norwegian Institute of Public Health to assess the potential for ingestion exposure to the chemicals in crumb rubber by children playing on its synthetic turf. Both studies concluded that health risks to children resulting from the ingestion of crumb rubber are low. Technology has evolved since the inception of turf fields to allow the processing of this material into a safe product. This improvement will not only benefit athletes, but PE classes can extend their outdoor time. Students with physical limitations or in wheelchairs can safely participate and not worry about tripping in ruts or getting stuck in divots. But this is more than a turf field vote. This is a vote to provide our children the best education we possibly can. We all learned from this pandemic the importance of technology. A yes vote strengthens technology in our district. Outdoor learning is vital, as we also learned from COVID. New boilers and security so our children can learn in a safe, warm environment, to me, is not a debatable topic. Research shows children will do better in schools where they feel safe and where their surroundings are warm in the winter and cooler in the summer months. These improvements speak to the heart of this referendum. I encourage everyone to vote yes on this referendum. Our children cannot vote to improve their educational environment, but you can vote yes for them. In closing, I want to thank the Board and the district officials for all the hard work you do and have done to make our schools the very best they can be. I have been appalled by the behaviors and sense of entitlement displayed by some speakers who have recently come before this Board. We can agree to disagree, but there is never reason to be threatening, rude, or disrespectful. Whether it is the use of masks, the way curriculum is delivered, turf fields, or a number of other issues, you've accepted a ridiculous amount of criticism and verbal abuse, and you still come back. On behalf of all of us who appreciate your efforts, thank you for all you do."
Thank you, Mrs. Schmitz. Next, we have Charmaine Adams.
Can you guys hear me okay? All right, I'm gonna try my best to be a public speaker today. A legal immigrant, I came to the greatest country on earth in 1994. Raised by my mother, who was also born in the UK, which is governed under socialism, and my stepfather, who was born and raised in the Philippines, a third-world country. Take heed to what is happening in this great republic. My daughter has been a cheerleader since first grade until now. She had to take a year off due to a major back surgery. She worked relentlessly for an entire year through blood, sweat, and tears to get back on the field so she could do what she loves the most. This Board is snatching that from her based on her, their personal beliefs, not based on science, as she has her own antibodies from contracting COVID in June, natural immunity is science, just not the revenue kind. Phew, sorry, ladies and gentlemen. She herself wrote a religious exemption plea to the Board, which was denied, as well as having a medical exemption, with great reason from her physician's assistant, who she sees at her primary care office. Under the dictatorship of New York, our doctors are terrified and refusing to go any further than a basic note due to the threats of them being fired for writing them unless the patient has taken the first shot and went into anaphylactic shock, basically having near-death experience before they have permission to write an exemption. I understand that New York doesn't accept religious or medical exemption for standard childhood vaccination. However, the COVID vaccination isn't a standard requirement for a child to attend school or to participate in extracurricular activities. A mandate is not a law, therefore you have no legal standing to make this your law. Our great Constitution grants us civil liberties. You have mandated that all athletes get vaccinated based on we are following the CDC guidance, who gets their guidance from Dr. Fauci. The same doctor is under great scrutiny for lying to Congress under oath about using taxpayers' money for gain-of-function research in China. That is illegal here in the US. So basically, let's take advice from a man who's been caught lying under oath about paying to create a virus that has caused five million deaths worldwide and 700,000 in this nation. He's faced a minimum of five years in federal prison if he is found guilty. Can you tell I'm nervous? We're also following the World Health Organization. Their president is neither a doctor nor a scientist. We have a virus that's been around for almost two years. A vaccine was created to help, so now the protected need to be protected from the unprotected by forcing the unprotected to use protection that isn't protecting the protected. Doesn't make sense, does it? For this first time ever, we have a medication, medications ineffectiveness is being blamed on those who haven't taken it. Your great go-to line is it's FDA-approved. Pfizer, the company with the highest fine in US history. Scientists can be bought just like politicians, follow the money. They claim we're in a pandemic, yet our borders are wide open. Almost 200,000 people coming over per month. Highest illegal immigrant invasion in US history. Extremely scarce testing and zero vaccination requirements. I've seen the Board members' personal Facebook pages, and when you're blatantly sharing your political beliefs as an educator or a member of the Board of Education for the students to see, you have failed at said positions. It is your job to teach kids how to think for themselves, not, not force your political ideology on them. Fifteen days to flatten the curve just became three jobs to participate in school sports and three jobs to feed your family. Sure can. At no, at no point in history have the people forcing others into compliance been the good guys. Our freedoms not end where your feelings begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. We have four public comments that came in online. We'll follow the same rules for three minutes. So the first one is from Fran Porter. It says, "Letter to the Gilren School Board Members. In follow-up to my comments at the 9/14 Board Meeting, I'm sending this letter as a written record of my concerns about installing synthetic turf for the school athletic playing field. Since no opposition was expressed at the August 10th meeting, in which the Board approved funding for the field, I believe it's important to provide you several of the safety, health, and environmental reasons for not installing sin turf. Heat, sin turf surfaces are known to heat up to unsafe temperatures. Studies going back to 2000s found that these surfaces can reach temperatures of 150-plus degrees in the sun, creating an unsafe surface for athletes. The argument from some that sin turf extends playing time is countered by the fact that these surfaces are too hot to play on for weeks at a time. Especially at high temperatures, artificial turf emits volatile organic compounds that are toxic to health. Injury, the NFL Players Association has cited the league's official injury reports between 2012 and 2018 showing overall more non-contact lower extremity injuries, more non-contact knee injuries, and more ankle or foot injuries on artificial turf versus natural grass. Two years ago, the league president advocated for all playing fields to convert to natural grass to protect players. As of 2020, fifteen teams played home games on sin turf while seventeen teams played on natural grass fields. The US Women's Soccer Team has long advocated for safer playing fields, suing FIFA for the right to play in the World Cup matches on natural grass as the men's matches are played. As of 2023, the women's team will finally be allowed to play in natural grass as well. The relationship between concussions and playing surface requires more study. One in five concussions in high school sport result from head-to-surface contact, according to Concussion Legacy Foundation White Paper, November 2015. Young people are especially vulnerable to this type of injury due to their developing neck musculature. With respect to concussion, the protective characteristics of an artificial turf field surface have been found to degrade as the field sees more use. In fields using rubber infill to hold up the plastic grass, significant compaction can occur, or the tire crumbs become tightly packed together, forming a surface that is dangerously hard. Areas of the field that are more frequently used can become more, most compacted. All but five professional baseball teams play on grass fields. According to the Gilren Board of Education website, quote, "Results to date do not conclusively prove that synthetic turf and any of the infill materials adversely affect the players on sportfield surfaces," unquote. This is a most unconvincing justification for using materials known to contain more than 300 chemicals." Okay, and with Ms. Porter's public comment, there are, I think you can see that there, I think there are five attachments that go with it. I, you know, I don't think there's, those are considered public comments, but they'll be on the website with the minutes. The next public comment is from Ray Shakulku. "Hi, I would like to recommend a change to the admissions for Tech Valley High School and for there to be at least two students to go there instead of one. I think it can be a great change because the school is very accredited, and a lot of the students this year are interested in going there. Please consider this change, and thank you." The third public comment is from Abby Ritter. It reads, "Dear Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education Members, I'm writing to express three concerns, all related to COVID data transparency, quarantine numbers, and vaccination rates. As of today, September 25th, the New York State website is still not providing any data about statewide school-based COVID cases. There have been eleven days of instruction in our district, and we still have no sense of whether our mitigation strategies have been more or less effective compared to other districts. The total number of positive COVID cases in our district isn't enough data to help us make decisions about whether district mitigation efforts are effective. We need to know how many people are being quarantined as a result of these positive cases to understand the actual educational impact. For example, there were seven positive cases, seven positives at the middle school this past week. Are there 200 students now in quarantine because they shared the same indoor lunch period? Did these seven cases result in just a handful of quarantines? And most importantly, how many people were able to avoid quarantine because they are vaccinated, allowing them to continue to attend class or continue working? We have been provided zero data about the number of staff and students who have been vaccinated, other than from the sports teams who have been required to vaccinate in order to be eligible to play this season. While I understand and appreciate the need for personal privacy, macro-level numbers would give us a clearer picture of how it relates to overall mitigation efforts. Data broken out by building is key to transparency and trust. Science and data are critical to guiding our mitigation protocols. It is essential that our community understands exactly how vaccination rates are affecting GCSD." Thank you, Abby Ritter. The fourth public comment is from Bethany Scher. Says, "To the Board of Ed and Superintendent Wiles, one month ago, I wrote to the Board of Ed regarding the issues with the end-of-day buses at FMS. The district raved off my concerns as kinks to be worked out, told the public that they were meeting that week to discuss these issues, and there were solutions forthcoming. One month later, nothing has changed. I could literally write the same email I wrote last month, attached below for reference. I write again to the Board of Ed, asking the district to admit there's a systemic busing issue. It is clear that when the new high school and middle school times were put in place, someone miscalculated how long it would take the buses to get from the high school runs to the middle school for dismissal. We are now in a situation where there are seemingly no fix beyond changing the dismissal times for one or both schools, which has effectively been done as the middle schoolers, who take the bus, are not dismissed until 20 to 25 minutes past the alleged end of FMS school day and arrive home to the bus stop at least 30 minutes past the stated times their buses are supposed to arrive at the stops. Yet, the district won't officially change the time or admit what is going on and take responsibility. Any parent who can do so is picking their middle school child, children up at this point, and I watch our school principal, Dawn, in neon vests and try to direct the additional chaos that is created by the crush of cars coming into the school at the end of the day. Meanwhile, the kids who have to take the bus aren't dismissed until very late because the buses haven't arrived, thus extending their already long school day. Is that what Mr. Laster needs to devote his time to, directing traffic? All because there was a mistake that the district won't admit, and to either affirmatively state to the parents there's no solution and/or officially change the start time and end time of the school, um, school days to rectify this. It's so bad, the district doesn't even send out daily emails saying the buses are late anymore, because it's every day, and now it's just supposed to be accepted. Many of us parents work hard to, to model accountability to our children and teach them to take responsibility for their mistakes and come up with solutions or admit when they cannot, especially in these trying times where it's a health and safety imperative to do so. I ask the district to do the same." Do we have any more public comments on the, that came in? Oh, okay, thank you. All right, so I know that we have bus transportation that will be shared under Superintendent info, Dr. Wiles, so we'll discuss that there. The public comment about Tech Valley High School, I don't know if we can put that on the, when did they make the decision? Or do they do a lottery for that?
They do a lottery for that.
It's really part of the budget process.
Okay, so we can talk about that this year when the budget start, process starts. The public comment about COVID numbers. I don't know if anyone has any questions. I know we've had questions before about getting percentages of vaccination rates, et cetera.
Uh, I've been asked by some parents to raise some concerns, but I can do that at the end. Board issues and.
Okay. And then lastly, um, the upcoming vote, the turf field, obviously a discussion point. I just wanted to raise some issues that came up with, um, I guess, some of the comments that I saw in the thought exchange about the turf field. And I think people don't know that there was, uh, I think, at least two years of work that was put into this. And I don't know if anybody else wants to speak to that point, but I could tell from the thought exchange, um, comments and just, you know, letters that I see or other comments that are posted online that maybe people don't see, you know, the work that was done leading up to this referendum vote.
Well, it was part of Business Practices Agenda for, I think it was more than two years, easily, because I remember when it was first introduced, probably maybe, I don't know, Neil, if you remember, maybe three years ago or four. You know, it was brought up first, and then we kind of like said, well, we're too busy with, you know, we had too much going on then, so we kind of put it to the side, and then it came up again and, and then a third time. So it's been on at least Business Practices radar, and then we brought it to the Board, uh, long before this year.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, it definitely was well before March 2020. But, you know, people were coming and speaking on it and speaking on its behalf. I mean, it just in the time that I've been here, I think it's been talked about, spoken about every meeting. A lot of the concerns that were raised and some of those public comments were thoroughly vetted by the, the Facilities Committee. We, we understood and listened to those concerns and, and, and listened to the larger majority of, you know, desire to have the field. And it's, again, as many of the speakers said tonight, it's part of a larger project that, that is all aimed at benefiting the three primary areas that we've, the district has identified. We, at, at no time prior to, you know, us creating this project, had I ever heard any negatives. I, I, I question the sincerity of people coming in after the fact, and I'm being very blunt with that, to come in after the fact, uh, on the eve of a very important vote for this district, to do a lot of important things for the school, schools. And I'm being purposely blunt. It's, it's an important project.
Blanca.
Yeah, I completely agree with Nathan. I, I think there were months of opportunities for this, and I find it suspicious that it's right now, right before the important vote. I'm a public health professional, a nurse. I literally live my life devoted to health concerns. I'm a vaccinator. My kids play on turf fields. I support the turf field. I would have, I did my due diligence. I wouldn't put my kids on something that I consider to be unsafe. And I, I wholeheartedly, um, trust our coaches, who also did their due diligence, and Dave Austin. And, uh, thank you to the players who came out tonight.
Rebecca.
I mean, I don't really question the sincerity of people that are voicing concerns, but I think we should emphasize that it was overwhelmingly popular for three years. And that it's a small portion of one of the aims of the project, which is outdoor learning space.
Barb, do you have your hand up? I think I see your hand.
I, I just wanted to share a couple of things that, uh, when we had visited and visited the other fields. One of the letter writers mentioned that the fields are unusable for two to three weeks because of the heat. The studies that, that I read that were done about de-forming of the field were, were done out west, uh, Arizona, Utah. And around here, you know, we're wondering if we hit 100 degrees two or three times in the summer. None of the athletic directors that have the fields around here ever expressed that the fields are unusable for two to three weeks, you know, over the course of the year. The other point that, uh, one of the letter writers mentioned was the concussions. Again, you learn from experience, these fields have been put into colleges and, and high schools since the late 60s, early 70s, and a lot has been learned. The pads that we're going to, for our field are the thickest pads possible because they have found over time that the more padding you put down, the safer it is for kids. I was really intrigued by our field hockey coach mentioning the number of recyclable water bottles that have been used in this new type of, uh, grass, which is very different from the old type of grass. So again, and as I think somebody pointed out, the committee did a lot of investigations on the product, on the playability, on the usefulness of the kids in the district. And everyone in the district, whether they're in elementary school right now or in high school at some point, will be using the field. It's also, uh, will be available to our pop water teams, people wanting to use our track. It just has so many uses for the entire community and entire school district that I just hope that the, the, the last minute fear mongering of, uh, you know, the, the deficits that some individuals view in the field, uh, will not distract folks from realizing that. As I think Rebecca pointed out, this bond issue covers a lot of really important areas. And I think, you know, I, I just hope, pray that the, uh, the community will support it. And again, one last thing. People have been asking for a turf field or bringing it to the Board for at least seven or eight years. So this isn't something that just popped up this year. We have been asked by the community, um, to consider this for, for many, many years. So this is not just a pop-up thing that somebody decided at the last minute. A lot of investigation went into it, and hopefully, as I said, I hope you support it by the community. Thanks, everyone.
Welcome. Anybody else? Judy.
I appreciate, uh, the concern, and I've heard from several people about their concerns about the turf field. But it's a smaller part of a lo, larger project, and to say that you would vote down this project based on the turf field is very disappointing to me. I think you need to look at the whole picture. I have not been crazy about it, but I've listened to the athletes and, and the people who have spoken, not just tonight, but over the course of, of, well, a couple of years probably. And I'm sure that they feel very strongly also. And I just hope that the people recognize that this is bigger than just, this project is bigger than just the turf field. It really is an important project to the safety and well-being of our students, and I hope people will get out and support it.
Okay, anybody else? I have, um, I know that we have it on the agenda further down under Board, um, I'm sorry, Board President Information about the, the budget vote, or sorry, School Business Information. And, oh, and also the, the School Board President Information item. But I would, I have some questions that we can talk about then, about the outdoor learning spaces. I think from the thought exchange, there were a lot of people who didn't understand the outdoor learning spaces. And I know that because the vote is Thursday, it might be, um, helpful to explain how that came about and what they're used for. So I'll ask down there. Otherwise, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the Independent Audit Report. This is a resolution to accept the independent audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. So this is a roll call, but I think first we need a resolution to, um, accept the independent audit. Kelly, second, Rebecca.
With the auditor, is that a period yet?
Oh, okay.
So we tried to, tried to tell him to talk around the time he was up.
Okay.
He's supposed to be here by eight, so if we could.
So we can come back to this.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on from independent audit and come back. We'll go on to consent items. This includes the minutes of the September 14th and September 21st, uh, Board Meeting. CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel action in the financials. Can I have a motion to accept the consent items? Blanca, second, Judy. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes nine zero. Next, information items, curriculum and instruction. Should I turn it to Dr. Wiles or? Is Damian there? Dr. Singleton?
Yes.
Okay, it's your turn.
All right, uh, thank you, Dr. Rivera. Just want to click update tonight. I'm pleased to share a brief update regarding the district's efforts to support the social and emotional well-being of students and great to take through a HHS transition back to school. To do so, the district has implemented a new program, it's called the Positivity Project. This program features daily activities designed to foster positive relationships, self-awareness and self-confidence, and understanding and appreciation of others. This is a program that will run for the entire school year, and we're very much looking forward to seeing the benefits for our key, recurring students.
Thank you, Dr. Singleton. Next, we have School Business Information. Neil?
Uh, yes, thank you. This evening, I'd like to share the timetable for staff involvement, board consideration, and public information and vote on the 2022-23 budget. Does seem to come around awful quick. Just spent one in May, and here we are at the beginning of October, and we're talking about the next year's budget. So, uh, we have a whole timeline that we will share in post. I, I will just pick out a few key dates for the Board and the public. October 19th, that'll be an opportunity for the public to provide input early on into the development of the subsequent year's budget. On December 7th, the Board will provide direction to the administration.
On March 8th, 2023, 2020, excuse me, 2022, yes. I'm already a year ahead of them. Release of the Superintendent's Budget, April 5th, Board Budget Work Session. April 12th is the budget adoption by the Board of Education. And then finally, on May 17th, is the budget vote and School Board election.
Thank you, Neil. Next, Superintendent Information, Dr. Wiles.
Sure, my first item tonight is to let everyone know that October is National Principals Month. So from the National Association of Secondary School Principals, the National Association of Elementary School Principals, and the American Federation of School Administrators. It says, "Principals are among the hardest-working yet often least-recognized individuals in education. Principals set the academic tone for their schools, and use their vision, dedication, and determination and provide the mobilizing force for achieving student success. Each October, these organizations seek to honor these unsung heroes for their tireless efforts in pursuit of excellence in education. So on behalf of the district, I'd like to recognize and thank our building principals, our assistant principals, and our house principals for their tireless work and commitment to our students, faculty, staff, and families. And it has never been more true than it has been in the last two years. So I see a couple of them in the audience here, and many are probably watching, so please accept my thanks for your amazing work."
So my second item is, is to circle back on the topic of arrival and dismissal times and how it relates to transportation. So we thoroughly recognize that this year has been a challenge, um, really in the beginning of the school year at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high. And I know that, uh, we've heard from many families, and justifiably so, and we've certainly heard letters from our community asking us to fix this. We actually have been trying something almost every single day to try to adjust the system. And some issues we actually were able to solve. For example, in the first week of school, arrival and drop-off and dismissal and pickup at the elementary buildings was very chaotic. We were able to make a couple minor adjustments. Honestly, just having students who are dropped off by their parents be able to enter the building a little bit early, it actually cleared up the traffic jams in our elementary buildings. And the thinking was that if we could have the elementary buildings smoother in the morning, that would have an impact that would, um, um, positively affect Tier Two, which is the high school, and then Tier Three, which is the middle school. And, uh, we have seen, I'm sticking in the morning right now. We have seen incremental improvement at the high school level, although we still have a handful of buses, and they're different ones every day, who are arriving at the high school, um, late. We've made some adjustments there as well. It's getting better. It's not perfect. I think at the middle school, uh, in the morning, uh, generally, our buses are getting there on time, but not universally. So, uh, Inho and Jerry, in our transportation leaders, have been literally looking, uh, run by run, bus by bus, to try to understand the causes for the delays. And sometimes they're obvious, and sometimes they're not, and sometimes they're not consistent. So it is, it is a puzzle. But we do see improvement in the morning. The afternoon, um, I think we are in a good place with our elementary buildings. We had, uh, a meeting with all of our leadership member, leadership team members today, and all five elementary buildings said their dismissal is also going well. They have a system. The traffic is manageable, and, um, the buses are leaving, bringing the elementary kids home on time and getting to the high school. And the high school dismissal is actually very fast. I think, I'm quoting Mr. Piscatelli, he used those very words today. The challenge is the middle school. It is, um, it is a challenge to have buses roll out of the high school at 3:07-ish and drop off the high school kids and then get to Farnsworth, where they are confronted with a lot of traffic, and you've heard it in the public comment, of families in their cars picking up their students and, uh, making it impossible for the buses to get in the driveway and out to the back. Mr. Piscatelli, I mean, Mr. Laster has in fact donned an orange or lime green vest, and, um, he and his team, the folks that we just recognized, have been out there doing everything in their power to make sure that, um, the traffic moves, that students are safe first and foremost. And we haven't come up until recently with what we think can be a solution to this that will not require us moving the start and end time of the middle school. Mr. Laster has been talking with, um, our, our colleagues in the Gilderlin Teachers Association to think out of the box about how, how do we make this work at the end of the day so our middle school students aren't held up and also aren't being, um, getting home much, much later. So we have, um, a potential plan that kind of takes the page out of the book we used at the elementary level to separate the, um, the picking, the students who are picked up or, or who need to get on a shuttle bus to come to the high school, um, or who walk home, to have them continue to release at the end of the third mod, uh, 13th mod, at 3:31. And then to therefore have all of that traffic clear out of the middle school, which makes room for the buses who typically get there about 3:45. If I'm correct, Mike's nodding to make sure I have it right. What this does is it allows the buses to get back to their spot on time or on, at, right at 3:35, for us to release the students who ride the bus right at 3:35, and then for them to roll right out without having to be caught up in traffic. We have been trying this, um, and it has promise. The challenge that we're working through, um, it, with, uh, is the supervision between 3:31 and 3:45. And we have some potential plans. We're working with the GTA on them. We're not quite ready for prime time yet, but we're very hopeful that this will work. So, um, then the last thing I'll say before I take questions is that we will be, after we get through our big week here with lots of big projects going on, we're going to invite the members of our school time task force to come back together and look at what we planned and how it may need to be adjusted in ways so that it'll work better next year. So that was a long story, but it, it is a complex web. And we are a system, so when you tweak one little piece at one place, it unravels or ravels, um, in lots of other places. So we have made progress, and I think we're going to turn a corner here in the next little bit. So I'll take questions. I also have, um, Mr. Laster and Mr. Piscatelli here, if you want to hear directly from them, because they're obviously managing the realities of these, uh, two points in the school day each and every day. Go ahead, Blanca.
Um, I have two questions. One, is it possible to maybe reconvene the school start time group earlier and see if there's anything we can do for the second half of the year? I'm concerned about once weather becomes another catalyst. So, I don't know, I'm feeling like waiting until next year, we're going to run into this again, no matter what we do, in January when winter hits. But, you know, that's just something I want to put out there. And then, two, Mr. Laster, are you on board with this? Like, what are your thoughts? Because at this point in time, I feel like, honestly, like it should be up to you and, and Inho.
It's all up to you.
This is a collective. Uh, thank you, Blanca. So, as Dr. Wiles stated, we've been trying to analyze the problem and look at solutions. And at this point, the staggered dismissal that we're doing right now over the past week and a half does allow for our traffic congestion in the front of the building to exit campus prior to us having the buses leave. So, if you think about pre-COVID, when we had all of the traffic and all of the buses releasing at the same time, it caused that traffic headache, and eventually, due to capacity, eventually, there's only a certain amount of cars that can line up from one fifty-five down to Presidential Way and onto our campus. So, everybody remembers that dance and how, how much time that took. So, one of the things we observed over the last few days when we were trying the staggered dismissal is we noticed that, okay, by three forty-five, the front of the building is now empty. So, once we get the buses there, which right now is right around three forty-five, we have most of the fleet parked in the back, ready to go. We have about two buses that usually pull in as the kids are exiting the building. Once the kids are on the buses, we can get those buses right out of campus without any traffic congestion in the front. So, one of the secondary challenges we're having, and I need to work with our parent community about this, it's getting pretty dangerous on Presidential Way. During dismissal, because parents are parking on both sides of Presidential Way, it prevents an emergency vehicle from getting down that road. So, in the last few days, I've been working with the Gilderland Police Department, looking at observations, trying to figure out what we can do. So, I'm appealing to the middle school parent community who picks up their children to go back to what we were doing last year. We can only park on the other side of the road so that you're facing one fifty-five. GPD will have to start giving tickets to people who park on the other side of the road, which is our side, by the athletic fields, because we have to be able to get an emergency vehicle down that road. Last year, when parents were working and cooperating and parent parking on that far side, students can cross in the crosswalk and then get to the vehicle if you choose to do that. I implore all parents to come onto campus to pick up your child, if possible. One of the things I'll be working with Cliff Noonie is creating a larger drop-off lane. We're going to eliminate some parking, so everybody knows the FMS campus, the parking along the athletic field side where the sidewalk is. So, we're basically going to turn that whole area into a huge pickup area now, a pickup line, because we need more space on campus so that parents can come on and pick up their kids. So, we're hopeful that once we try these efforts, this Wednesday, we're going to pilot to see if I can get late buses back at least one afternoon, because I'm also very hopeful that we can run at least one afternoon activity period. But that's going to be contingent upon if I can get the buses off campus by three fifty, three fifty-five, can I get enough buses back for our late bus run at around four twenty? So, right now, that is the only solution, other than shifting the school day to later, which I think is something that none of us want to do for a variety of reasons. And we all know that the reasons associated with the developmental readiness of our children, as well as the routines that have already been established by our faculty members and our families, we're trying to figure out a way and a solution that we don't disrupt the entire apple cart. I can tell you that this is not ideal for the middle school community. And I'm excited to hear that the board is interested in reconvening the school start time task force, because ultimately, I'd like to, you know, be part of a discussion of whether or not the change was worth the impact it has made on the system. So, at this point, we're poised to try this. I'm hoping it will work. This is all contingent upon, I got enough volunteers from our faculty association to help out with that supervision period, which ends up to be about fourteen minutes from three thirty-one to three forty-five. I'm hopeful, and I think that our faculty and staff will definitely understand the need and, and step up when, when asked, so, to volunteer. So, stay tuned, we're hoping to test the theories rest of the week. Potential start date coming hopefully by next week, once everything works out. I'll take other.
Are you going to put signs along that side of the athletic field with no parking or something?
Yep, so tomorrow, Cliff is coming to campus, and we're going to talk about, you know, coning it off, roping it off, what signage do we need? When we created the drop-off lane that we have now, you can see some of the signage that we created. So, I would anticipate us doing similar signage over there. And I'm also, we're also going to have to obviously communicate it to our school community, both our faculty, because now our faculty members, I have, we have to find other parking for them on campus. We're going to be losing about twenty, twenty-plus spots. There is room on campus, but, you know, some people who are used to parking there may have to park in another place, so. But at this point, I don't really see, given the, given the challenges of our campus, and the fact that there's one road in to, to, to another one road that goes out to a main thoroughfare, other than building the Singleton Flyway, which might be the next capital improvement project, I don't see another solution at this time.
I think the other area is the communication to the parents, that's the question.
Can we send out, you know, like if things are going to be late, or this has to be, parents have to know.
Yep, so every day, I have a scheduled SMM that is sent to go out at three thirty-four, or two, three thirty-five. I'll make sure that it's scheduled to be sent again. I mean, I know that, you know, I was getting them as the father of a seventh-grade student in the building, so, who is also waiting for thirteen minutes to get on his bus, and he's arriving home late to the chagrin of Rosie, our little puppy, but.
Is it more helpful to the current situation to have parents have their kids take the bus? Or more helpful to have us drive them in?
Well, I think as, as the person who submitted the letter today, I think some parents said, well, wait a minute. In, in the first week or two, when it was really late and students were getting home five, five-thirty, I think parents who had the ability to come to campus and pick up their student did. So, once they figured out that, okay, now they're doing the staggered dismissal, if I can come get my child, you know, they won't have to wait for thirteen minutes to get on a bus, and then they're going to be late forty-five minutes anyway, so I just come to campus. So, yeah, I do think that contributes to it. In fact, I had a conversation with a parent of an Altamont family, and she said yesterday that, that, yeah, there's, there's a few families from Altamont that we have a ride-sharing. And she's like, if, if, if you move it to three forty-five, then we'll just put our kids on the bus. So, I do think that that might help decrease some of the traffic in the front of the building, so.
And part of the prob, part of the problem, too, is what you mentioned briefly in terms of the road, the access in and out. We were trying to figure that out years ago, too.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, I, I can tell you that it takes twelve cars from where I stand at the, at the crosswalk to get to one fifty-five. So, it then takes about twenty-five cars to back up from the stop sign at the end of Peter Allen Way, all the way to the front entrance of where people will turn in to the parking lot. That's about twenty-five cars right there. So, then you add all of the cars that are in the loop trying to get out. And, you know, in normal circumstances, we have to try to get the athletic buses out. So, you know, we will stop car traffic to try to get those athletic buses out, because we know that they have to get to their practices, they have to drop the kids at Towessenta, then then go to this place. So, that's a priority for us, getting the athletic buses off campus. We have some students with special needs who ride some special transport. Those are other buses that we try to get off campus as quick as we possibly can. And then in addition, we have all of our BOSs, DHH learners, who get picked up from different school districts, who we try to get them off campus in that first wave of people leaving.
And you still have to get out onto Route one fifty-five.
Yeah.
The traffic there does not stop.
Absolutely. Now, GPD, it's getting, it's, it seems that the volume and the amount of people driving on one fifty-five at dismissal has gotten worse. You know, the traffic study that they did a few years back, the town for the development, you know, I don't know what the data said about that, but it'd be interesting to do it again to see if there's been an uptick. It seems like there has been.
It does seem like, and, and that's nothing we can control.
No, the only thing that I will say is, you know, we, we work with GPD, and, and, you know, at least for the past few days, they've committed to try to send a car so that they can help us stop traffic on one fifty-five. So, the last two days, they arrived right at like three fifty when the buses were leaving. So, not only did we have no traffic in the front of the building, but then we had GPD stopping traffic on one fifty-five. So, those buses were flying off campus the last two days. The only other thing that we are beginning to explore, because while, you know, donning the neon vest and going out and taking off my mask and directing traffic is the highlight of my day sometimes, other than contact tracing. You know, I, I think exploring whether or not the district can employ a school crossing guard, I think that's something we should think about. So, I just began dialogue with, with Neil and, and Inho and Cliff Noonie to figure out the process to do that. So, we're beginning to explore whether or not that's an option, because, you know, we want to be out there, but if there's a crisis that I have to deal with, I, I can't be out there, so, go.
Is being an advocate to put a light there through the town, is that, would that help, or is the backup to, you know, is it compounded by the one fifty-five light?
It, um.
Like, is that something that would even help, like to?
I will tell you, in a former life as a high, in a former life as a high school principal, to try to get a traffic light outside of school district.
I don't know what the process is.
It's like a DOT process, it takes quite a bit of time. You know, I know the town was talking about a roundabout.
Right.
At the end of Presidential, and, you know, I don't know what that would do, if that would help or hurt.
I'm just curious.
So, I don't know, I know in the, in the planning conversations, they weren't talking a light, they were talking a roundabout.
That's my one, that's my one way in and out of my house.
I know, I know.
But I don't, the traffic doesn't affect me ever for some crazy reason.
Right.
I was like, I mean, lights pop up all the time, roundabouts pop up all the time, I don't know how that process works, or whatever, if they've talked about it.
Well, I guess just in addition to all of this, I think we need to recognize work the district office and that you're doing, and also Cliff, but the Gilderland Police, how lucky we are to have good relations with them, and that they're willing to try and help us sell.
Yeah, and, and maybe, great, you know, when they can send help at dismissal for us, they do. You know, it's, it's been pretty consistent recently, which is great, and we'll take all the help we could.
But it's just like you, if there's an emergency, they can't be there.
Well, right, and that's unfortunately.
I know, I'm just saying.
Right.
Lot of blocks.
Yeah.
Isn't there, isn't there a development plan to, for our town?
My understanding is the status of development may be on hold, if not, off the table. The last that I heard or read was that they needed a second egress on the backside of the property, and that's impossible because of the neighborhood that's back off, you know, sort of not road. And when the developers went to the town planning board, and correct me if I'm wrong, Neil or Marie, or where it was, but when they went to the planning board and they heard that they needed a second egress, I think the project sort of stalled at that point. So, I don't really know where it's at, but that's the last information I heard about it. And I was watching it, because obviously, it was going to impact us quite a bit.
Yeah, I hope the town board and the town planning board members are all watching this and taking this into account. What you, your decisions impact our schools profoundly.
So, I just want to clarify, so the, the issue with the, the middle school end of day is not because of the bus driver shortage, but more beca, due to the, the time, the schedule of the, the timing this year, the new time.
The bus driver shortage, shortage compounds the system's challenges. The fact that we're the third tier, and the fact that, you know, high school ends at two fifty-seven, buses are rolling seven minutes after that, unless we figure out how to teleport some high school kids home and have them drive straight over the hill to FMS, I don't know how they're going to make it to FMS by three thirty-one.
And I think it's a great idea that the, the late school, what is it, the late school start time?
Task, yeah.
Task force, or that, starts, you know, thinking about that for next year, because it's October, and it's, well, I know the bus driver shortage is, there's only so much we could do, but at least if we could counteract with the time, and it sounds like the principals really need to, to be involved in this, too, to see after what happened this year. I just, I, you know, I wasn't involved in that, but I know that you guys have spent a lot of time, I know Rebecca, you were on it, right? That there was, what, at least eighteen months that went into it?
At least two years, maybe? Yeah, we were well over two years.
Okay.
It's kind of like the turf field.
I mean, speaking of a second egress, I mean, I, I don't even have kids at the middle school, and all I hear about the middle school is how horrible the parking is long before this. Parking, driving in and out, I mean, I, I don't, I, I think we should probably think about, we got to do something on a physical plant, physical level to alleviate the problem, even if we get this time worked out, it's still going to be a problem. Even if this wasn't COVID, if we weren't short on bus drivers, this would be a problem.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I asked about that before, like, long-term planning in terms of like a capital project, because there's that building in front that's absolutely useless, taking up space, and it's just like a mess over there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's been any studies, I mean, before I got here, any studies done to figure out a way whether we put in a second egress so that we can get traffic flowing a little better, because the traffic flows bad regardless of what's going on, it's always been bad.
Yeah, so I can speak a little bit to it, and Neil, Marie, jump in. So, in two previous, two previous bond capital improvement projects, I was lucky enough to be on the facilities committee, and one of the recommendations I made was, hey, let's see what it would cost to do a second egress. So, actually, with the help of Mike Andrews and the architects, and all the engineers that were working on the project, they actually created a second egress. So, if you're standing, if you're standing in front of FMS, looking at one fifty-five, right to the right of the organic garden, in between where the old DO is and the organic garden is, right? So, and the theory was, that would be the bus, so we would separate bus traffic and car traffic. We would have, you know, no cars coming in and out that way, it would just be for buses, so we would separate and not have the commingling of, of the cars. The recommendation was that would help some of the traffic congestion, we could put a light or some type of, to get the buses out on one fifty-five quicker. The price tag, I believe, was upwards of quite a lot of billion, which it didn't make the, it didn't make the capital improvement project at that time. So, there, there was definitely conversation, there was, you know, drawings and plans, and, but I know it was a significant amount of money in order to do it.
It was the two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
Plan, and I, and I want to say it was about three and a half million.
Yeah, I was thinking two point seven off the top of my head.
And so, that committee had to make really tough decisions to get the dollar amount down to the forty-one million, which in fact, didn't pass, it had to get down to the thirty-one million, which kind of puts us where we are, two days away from going back out to do some of that infrastructure work. So, that's, I, I think eventually it needs to be done.
Yeah, we probably should put it on our, I mean, I know that Cliff's been talking about the next five-year plan, and probably something that should be considered in that.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, and that impacts everybody.
Yeah.
In the district.
For somebody who has to drive that way to get home.
Yeah, and this is not an option, I mean, every, it's like, it's impacting the, there's the students in the classroom because of, you know, dismissal time, obviously, going, impacting the school day, et cetera, so it's directly impacting kids. I think, I don't, I, I've been asking about that building, get rid of that building. We don't know how much it costs, but, yeah, I don't know if there's a facilities committee, well, I guess we'll see what happens on Thursday first.
Yeah, probably step one first.
That, that building was discussed in facilities committee.
Yeah.
And Cliff had a, it was a good, it was a valid reason, I should say.
I mean, when I first got on the board, I remember Chris McMahon is talking to me about the FMS, the traffic there. So, this is going to my seventh year, it's not that long, but it's, and it was, sounded like it was a problem for a while even before that, so, this, it's, it's not going away.
So, stay tuned.
Oh, I have one question, sorry, not. Oh, I have one question, sorry, not for, um, Mike, for Dr. Wiles. That, that email this, I think we got an email this afternoon about, um, like a cross-country meet and the kids didn't have a bus. Is that, like, is that due to just, if somebody gets sick or something in the morning, like, everything gets thrown off with the buses and bus drivers that day?
Um, I didn't see that email today, but, um, yes, if we have someone call out, I'm looking at Inho, which does happen, it, it does mean that we, we have to prioritize getting kids from school to home, and, and sometimes that means that the, um, athletic trips, um, you know, don't have a ride. We are, we are hiring, um, coach buses to take kids to various games and wherever they need to go. I, I just want to make sure everyone understands that this is not a Gilderland issue. Every single one of my colleagues is in the same boat with kids getting late home, late to school, um, you know, texts going out, so sorry, bus forty-one will not be picking up anybody today, so you need to get your own kids to school.
Okay.
Um, we're working with, um, our legislative committee of superintendents, are trying to, um, present some potential solutions to our legislators to give us some relief. Two quick examples, one is the fourteen-day waiting period that happens where we train people and then we have to wait. Uh, the other idea that we're sharing with them is creating like an S-class of drivers, because school districts are notorious for training people to drive school buses, and then they quickly realize when they have their C D L that they can, um, perhaps earn more money working in a different kind of industry where the boxes don't talk. So, um, and there's some other ideas on, on the horizon as well, because this, again, is not a Gilderland thing, it's not a New York thing, it is nationwide, and I think it, it's even global. You hear the global supply chains are crippled because of these shortages. So, we continue to be creative, um, I'm most pleased that we continue to be collaborative. I mean, we've been working really closely with all of our, um, our team members and the Gilderland Teachers Association and with Inho and his team, and, um, you know, it's just a work in progress, and we're hoping that next couple of days we'll have a breakthrough and we'll get a little bit of clear sailing.
Are the, um.
Thank you.
Were the principals part of the, uh, late start time committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was about forty-five people on that committee, it was inclusive and expansive, and we'll bring them back and whoever wants to come back and go from there.
I just want to thank the families and the parents of F M S for your patience and understanding while we work through this. Um, I also want to thank, uh, our faculty and staff. Uh, our faculty and staff have been amazing, um, collaborative and very patient as we figured this out. And then last but not least, a group that gets forgotten, our bus drivers have been fantastic, being flexible, trying different things, working with us to see what, what we can do to improve it with the least amount of disruption for students and families. So, thank you.
Uh, and thank you to our new director of transportation, and I'm so sorry that you started this year.
But I'm glad we have him.
Yes, we're lucky to have you.
Um, and is that all Dr. Wiles for you?
That is, yes.
Okay.
And those who have like four o'clock A M morning.
So, we'll go back, I think, to, correct Neil, to the, um, external audit, or, uh, the independent audit report, so back up to number four on the agenda, a resolution to accept the independent audit report. First, we need a resolution to accept, and then we can discuss Blanca, second Kelly. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Get passes nine zero, sorry.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine, nine.
No, Blanca, no, um.
Sorry. Barbara says yes.
What's that? Oh, sorry, sorry, okay.
Up to here first.
Yes, I'll just turn it over to you Neil, that's better.
Safer.
Um, I'll thank you, um, pleasure to have Mike Rossi here, the director of Western Company, who's been with the district for several years. He and his staff come in and do the annual fiscal audit of our, our financial records. Uh, he's here to present tonight, uh, he did meet with the audit committee and spent about an hour walking through the document and explaining key facets of that. We're not looking to spend that amount of time tonight, um, with you, but, um, Mike will give you the shortened and abbreviated version of the findings from the audit. I'd also like to point out John Rizzo is here with us this evening, business administrator and chief accountant for the district and who's, um, got a great deal of responsibility for managing, uh, the finances of the district in, in terms of, uh, the audit and, and the results of the audit, so we're pleased to have him here as, as well. And with that, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and as Neil said, I'm Michael Rossi from Western Company. And each year we perform an annual audit of the district as required by New York State and the federal government. It is my job under the five-point plan to meet with the audit committee, which I did about two weeks ago, and as Neil said, we spent an hour going through this report in detail, answering any questions that the audit committee had, and tonight you found bound copies of the audit when you came in. The audit committee asked me to come here, as Neil said, and give you a few highlights and answer any questions that the board members or any audit committee member would have. So, the independent auditors' report on page one and two is what we do as a profession. We attach opinions to management's financial statement, and at the bottom of page one, we say, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly. That is what we consider an unmodified opinion, that is the highest opinion we have as a profession. After the independent auditors' report, you have management discussion and analysis. Management discussion analysis has been part of the financial statements for about the past fifteen years. G A S B, the governmental accounting standards board, issued standard number thirty-four and said, governments in the United States have to have an M D N A and they have to have full accrual financial statements. New York State said that is great, we applaud doing that, we'll put them in, but districts are not allowed to account for their activities on a full accrual basis of accounting. So, if you were to go to page twelve, page twelve is a statement of net position, and this is full accrual accounting, and you can see at the bottom our total net position is quite a large deficit. What happens is, we account on the modified accrual, on the full accrual, they make us see what our liabilities long-term would be. And the biggest one is G A S B seventy-five, which is other post-employment benefits, and it's been studied that about three hundred million dollars is our future liability for the health insurance that we've passed out. But again, New York State has come out and said, funding of this liability is not allowed, there is no trust, there is no reserve to set it up in. So, these pages have to be part of the financial statements, they're a little bit misleading when you think about how we are required to do the accounting on a modified accrual basis. And page fourteen is the balance sheet, and this paints quite a different picture than that full accrual page. And it's set up in columns, and you see the first column is the general fund. The general fund accounts for almost all of the activity that happens in a school district, and you see the total assets and total liabilities, and the difference is fund balance. Fund balance can only be in five categories, that's per G A S B fifty-four, and New York State said we don't have one of those categories committed, so we have the other four. The first one's non-spendable, and you see there's a little bit of inventory, that just means it's in a form other than cash. Then we have restricted fund balances, and you see we have a capital reserve. That's the most restricted reserve there is, requires the public to vote to spend the money. It also requires the public to establish it, and it's good for a time period that's put into the proposition. Then we have the reserve for employee benefits, that can only be used when somebody retires from the district to pay back vacation or sick time. The reserve for debt is actually in the debt service fund, that can only be used to pay back bonded debt, principal or interest. Then we have a tax servatory reserve, it's a very important reserve. As people file suits to reduce their taxes and may, the district may have to pay back taxes, that's what that reserve is for. We have an unemployment insurance reserve, it's another important reserve. If somebody gets laid off from the district, New York State does pay the unemployment claim, but then they turn around and rebill us for that, so basically we're self-insured for unemployment. We have an E R S reserve and a T R S reserve, and those are to offset spikes in the E R S or the T R S rate. T R S has been as high as twenty-five percent, as low as point six-two percent, so it does fluctuate quite a bit. And if that spiked up, you wouldn't have budget to do that, so you would use this reserve to offset it. Workers' comp reserve, that is used for worker comp items, and then you have a reserve for repair, and that's another restricted reserve that requires a public hearing to use it. If you don't have the public hearing, you have to replace it equally over the next two years. Then you see assigned fund balance, assigned fund balance here is the amount of purchase orders that were open at the end of the year, those automatically roll over, and they increase the voter budget that the voters approved in May. And then unassigned, you see it's four million one nine nine one eight three, it's a very important number, that is four percent of the subsequent year's budget, and that is the maximum allowed under real property law thirteen eighteen, so the district has complied with that. Second column has no fund balance, um, grants typically, Title I, Section six eleven, six nineteen, those types of things. We receive money if we spend money, so we have to spend the grant and then we request the money back, thus the revenue and expenditure equal, and no fund balance is ever created. School lunch fund is for the operations of the lunch fund, and you can see there's two fund balances in there. One is inventory, food supplies that was left over at June thirtieth, and assigned fund balance, and that's assigned because it's in a fund, and G A S B says it has to be assigned. Debt service, we talked about, that's only for bonded debt, principal or interest. And then you see the capital project fund is a deficit fund balance of twelve point eight million, and that is typical. So, when a district does projects or buys buses and they buy them on a bond anticipation note, that is a liability. At the end of the year, we had about twenty million dollars in bond anticipation notes. When those bonds are paid off from general fund appropriations or bonded, they become revenue for the district and wipe off the deficit. And then you see we have our new C M special miscellaneous revenue fund. So, what happened is G A S B eighty-four came out and said school districts basically no longer have a trust and agency fund, so certain liabilities, New York State determined, went to the general fund, and then the district had to make a determination if it's scholarships and extra classroom activity, if we had control over them, and if you did have control over them, they went into the special miscellaneous revenue fund, and that's where they went, and that's about five hundred and eighty-six thousand that we have. That is the most important page in the financial statement from a modified accrual basis of accounting. After that, we have several pages of notes to the financial statements, those are pages eighteen to forty-seven. The notes provide detail on the significant accounting policies. They also discuss any capital assets the district has, any debt the district has, and they go into great detail about G A S B sixty-eight, which is the study of the pensions, and G A S B seventy-five, which is the study of post-employment benefits. Then, if you were to go ahead to page, so there's supplementary and required supplementary information after that, that means that either G A S B, the highest standard setter, has required it, that's required supplemental information, and then supplementary information is somebody else, in this case, it's New York State, has required it. And on page fifty-three, we do have that calculation of the four percent that New York State requires. So, it's got the voter-approved budget, the calculation of four percent, and that is the number that we saw over on page fourteen. So, then on page fifty-seven and fifty-eight, this is the second opinion from Western Company. So, from page one and two to page fifty-seven, fifty-eight, all of those pages are management's, and this financial reporting is, we cannot come in, audit, do the financial statement, put together this financial statement, because we would be auditing our own work. So, in this case, we have to talk about internal controls over financial reporting, and here again, there's no deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting. The books and records here are very good, no issues whatsoever. Obviously, the deadline is October fifteenth to have this completed, we met with the audit committee about two weeks ago, so you can see that there's no issues putting together, you know, an eighty-page report in a timely manner. Then on page fifty-nine and sixty, because the district, um, has expenditures of more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars federal, we have to do what is called a single audit or a compliance audit. And the district had about two point nine million dollars worth of federal aid that flowed in this year, and probably next year a lot higher with the additional CARES Act monies that are gonna come in. But we have to do an audit based on compliance with categories the federal government has set up. And here again, we've done that, there's no issues, unmodified opinion for compliance with federal awards. The federal awards are listed out on page sixty-one, and, you know, the school lunch is about the largest program right now. Next year, we'll see where the stabilization monies take us, but they'll probably become the largest. The next largest is special education, which is six eleven and six nineteen. After that, we have the last opinion in the financial statement from Western Company, and that is on page sixty-five and sixty-six. So, I am on a group of CPAs that meets with O S C, S E D, we have a committee, New York State Public School Committee, and we asked to have this audit removed from the financial statements. We were saying that the districts had moved their monies into that C M fund that I talked about, and there was no reason for this extra classroom activities audit anymore, and New York State came back and decided that they still wanted it. So, it is in here, the board does have oversight over the extra classroom activity funds, and that's why it was always included in the audit. And here, this is on the cash basis, so extra classroom is revenue when it gets deposited in the bank, and it is a disbursement when the check is written. So, it's not on, on a full accrual, it's not on a modified accrual, it's cash basis. And here we have a qualified opinion, and the only reason it's qualified is because, as I just said, we're auditing from when it went into the bank, we're not auditing at the event, we don't know how much money was collected, we don't know if they, you know, didn't ring up all the money, so, but from when it went into the bank and from when the check was written, there were no issues with the extra classroom, it's well put together. Pages sixty-eight and sixty-nine list out all of the clubs, all of the classes and the dollars that are left in there, and there's about two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in extra classroom funds. So, as I said, the audit, it went very well, there's no major issues. We're very lucky to have such a talented business office. Neil and John and their staff provide us everything very timely. They call throughout the year if there's any questions, and we have various discussions, which also helps the audit process go smoothly. But, um, if there's any questions from the board members, or, I know the board members here are the audit committee members too, but if there's any questions, I can take them now, or I can even come back or answer any questions via email or phone if you want, at a later date.
I have, uh, two questions, Mike.
For the, um, the extra classroom activity funds, is there a limit for these clubs, like, that they can only have X amount of dollars in their balance?
No, the only, the only real limitation of the extra classroom activity funds is once a class leaves, they're not, no, they're no longer supposed to be part of the extra classroom. They could, they could build up a hundred thousand dollars if they wanted to. And really, it's the kid's decision on what the money gets spent on, if it's legal. I mean, the board would probably have to approve anything overnight or a trip, but if the students wanted to have a club and they wanted to get pizza every single day after school, very permissible.
And then the other question I had was, um, because the school lunch is being. And then the other question I had was, because the school lunch is being paid for, again, this year till the spring, how does that impact on, like, page 14 with the school lunch fund?
Well, I did talk about this in the Audit Committee with you.
I know, I forgot, sorry.
No, 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 no. So what I'm saying is, is that, so school lunch programs in New York State have taken quite a turn now. Basically, everybody's getting lunch, everybody's being reimbursed from the federal government. And this year, we did have about $150,000 worth of profit in our school lunch program. That'll continue. And you have to look at your total expenditures of the lunch program, and normally, New York State says three months' worth of expenditures would be what fund balance would be. So I think we're slightly higher than that right now. But again, the circumstances are going to change, they're going to go back. And if you needed equipment in the school lunch fund, if you needed a new refrigerator, new stoves, any of that, that would come directly out of fund balance and would lower that right back down below the three-month
Okay.
... number.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to thank Neil and John and your team for doing such an awesome job. It was clear from the Audit Committee meeting that everything looks spectacular. There are really no issues, and I think we just had some questions on, on how some of these things work. But does, I mean, I don't know what happens next, Neil, if we do roll call vote on it tonight, or, does anybody else have questions?
Well, I just, so what happens now is if you do, if the Audit Committee makes a recommendation to the board for acceptance, then it's transmitted to OSC and SED, and then John and I both certify it, and it goes to the federal government.
Okay.
So that's the end process. And technically, that's supposed to happen by October 15th. That's why I'm always at this October board meeting.
Got it. So we need to make a resolution, then, and then it's a roll call vote, Linda? Is that, or we already made a resolution?
We opened it with a recommendation?
Yeah.
Do I make a recommendation to accept it? Is that what the?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Okay.
It's on the Audit Committee.
Okay, so you ready for that?
Yep.
Mrs. Blaseyak?
Yes.
Dr. Butterfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frederico?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez-Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Person?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabarin?
Yes.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tollhill?
Yes.
Your motion passes 9-0. Thank you so much, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. And anytime, any questions, I'm available to come meet with the board, Audit Committee. Thank you.
Awesome. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So now we'll move back down the agenda to, I think you just had finished, right, Dr. Wiles, Superintendent Info?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go on to Board President Information. That's me. We have the Capitol Construction Project Referendum vote on Thursday. So the in-person voting for the Gilderland Central School District's Capitol Construction Project Referendum will take place on Thursday, October 7th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at all five elementary schools. And anybody have questions? Judy?
Are we going to have a meeting at Gilderland afterwards so we can hear the results or what's going to be?
Yep, same, same as typical.
Okay.
For the same process. So we'll meet in the gym at Gilderland Elementary and announce the results that evening, whenever the results are available.
Wait till I get them.
No, I didn't have it.
It usually hasn't been an issue by the time we get the results in, so.
Okay. Dr. Wiles, would this be a time that you could talk about the outdoor learning spaces?
Sure. Let me, before I get there, let me just let everyone know who's watching that yesterday morning, we launched a thought exchange just to see if there were last-minute questions that people had about the project, so that we can address them before everyone has to make a decision. So we are categorizing them. Obviously, we can't answer every small question into groups, and those will be posted to our website. We're working for tomorrow, so they're available before people head to the polls. But one of the questions was about the outdoor learning spaces. The idea for this actually came from one of our elementary teachers at Pine Bush, who was on our video, if you watched the video, who was one of many teachers who, who used the necessity of the pandemic to take students outside for, for learning, for ventilation, for mask breaks, for all the things that we've all been working with. And it was her idea to say, wouldn't it be really helpful for the students to have a place to go outside and learn, where they had a place to sit, or something to write on, that would have access to technology? And so that's where the proposal came from. And the idea was, we would have one of these at each of our seven buildings. There were questions there about, will they all be the same size? And the answer is yes, approximately the same size. They'll be equipped in developmentally appropriate ways, so the furniture might be a little bigger at the high school. They will not be heated. We had someone ask if they would be heated, but they will not be. And there was some concern that they would only be used, you know, two or three months a year. I, I think we have hardy people here. I have noticed, because there's a courtyard right outside of my window, that we have students outside throughout the school day for much of the school year, except on the worst of days of rain and snow and cold. So it's my anticipation that they will be used frequently and probably be in great demand. So that's the purpose of them. We had some questions about whether or not there would be a curriculum that goes with them, and why don't we do other kinds of outside learning? But one of the things we'll put in the response is that we do have a lot of outdoor learning going on right now. The butterfly station, we have gardens, we have ponds, we have courtyards. So there are places all around the district where teachers are taking students outdoors to be in nature, to learn about nature. These will be another venue for that learning to happen, but it can also be a regular lesson. It doesn't have to be outdoor learning, where they can use the outdoor space. The other thing I'll mention is that we are currently writing our application for the third federal grant, and we are applying for a significant portion of the funding for the pavilions to be included in that application. The timing here is such that we don't know if it will be approved for one. So our proposal to the community is the entire cost, is if we had to bond for the entire cost, minus a small piece that has already been approved in our second federal grant. So there is, I think, a very good chance that because these pavilions are very much in line with responding to the, to the pandemic, that we will have a significant amount of funding in the third grant to offset some of this cost, that we will not need to borrow the full level of authorization that we're seeking on Thursday. So we're hopeful. We're trying to wrap up that grant and get it in very soon. So we're really hopeful that all of this falls into place.
I answered a lot of questions there, I think. Yeah, thank you. Does anybody else have questions or comments?
I'm super happy about the outdoor thing. I know my, my kid's third grade class in our open house. Our teacher was like, your kids are going out every day, pavilion or not, snow boots, or snow boots.
Yeah.
And like, absolutely, go outside, and kind of experience that throughout all of our kids' education. It was just so great to see. Because I'm learning more about that. I was, I was, first I was like, what are these outdoor pavilions? And that was a, kind of reading the comments and looking more into it. I think it's just amazing, and especially since it will likely get reimbursed. I'm super excited to see the pavilions. It's awesome.
Anybody else?
Selma?
Yep. Barb?
The other thing that, what we're developing is, we pointed out, is that these pavilions in each of the elementary schools will be able to be used, you know, by community members. They bring their children to the playground, they may have a little one in a stroller, they have now a shaded area, and maybe they rent something to sit on while they watch their, you know, their children, obviously depending upon the placement of the pavilions. But they would be available to the community, you know, in school and in session as well.
Blanca?
Could they be used potentially as a place, say that COVID continues and social distancing continues, and can they be used for lunch, perhaps?
Probably. I mean, if you've walked through our halls during the daylight now, you see tables set up in many, many courtyards, and many of our students eating al fresco. So this would probably be like the best tables in the house, al fresco.
Absolutely. I, I'm going to discuss under, you know, board sharing ideas, some comments I received about concerns about lunch. And so I was thinking this might alleviate that, and also be a nice add to your grant application, that we could alternately, you know, use that as a space for eating.
I just want to highlight, too, that there are the playgrounds on this referendum vote, and I know that, I don't know, since I've been on here, that's been talked about for a while. They're expensive. The PTA cannot raise enough funds to replace playground equipment, so this would be an opportunity where we could replace playgrounds.
And also have some equality between the schools in terms of the playground. And, you know, the PTA is funding it, you may have a real active PTA. But I know all the PTAs I've ever been to have talked about a playground, either building it or hoping for one, or the need for a new one. And I think it's a terrific part of this.
There were some questions on that thought exchange about whether or not the playgrounds were ADA or sort of fine. Did you speak it out?
ADA?
ADA, yeah.
Yep. The proposal is to make sure they all have some ADA accessibility to them.
All right, so move on to Letter B, the NISBA Voting Delegate Guide. If you click, you can see that there are, I don't know if everybody, did everybody get the link to fill out the invote? I don't know when it was, when it was due.
Sent out yesterday.
Sent out yesterday.
It was sent out yesterday, and I think there was a due date on when you needed to, to submit it by. I submitted it, but we'll note, so we should have all nine. And, Kim, you should also get that two out of.
I submitted it.
Oh, you did? Oh. You're on top of things. Any questions? I forgot, like, who was going to the conference? I know it's virtual.
I think Barbara's the delegate.
The delegate.
She'll need all our
Responses.
Responses.
Yep. And then Gloria, you and Judy are attending also?
We were.
I mean, virtually?
We can't go, but, yeah.
It's free now, right?
Mm-hmm. Anybody can go.
Yeah. So I think that's important. I think the, there's a few sessions that are, you don't have to go for the whole thing. There are sessions you can pop on for, like the law ones I find really interesting.
Yep. That's going to be Sunday, I think.
All right, so we'll move on to action items. School Business, Neil?
My first item this evening is a resolution to canvassing an affidavit ballots at the district offices that will occur on Friday, October 8. The day after the vote at 2:00 p.m. And the individuals designated as the Central Board of Inspectors to cast and canvass the affidavit ballots are Linda Livingston, Deborah Sims, and myself.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the resolution to canvass affidavit ballots? Judy, second. Gloria? Any questions or comments?
How many do we typically have, if there's a typical?
Typically, not a lot. I'd say maybe around five or so. Varies a little bit from election to election. But these are only cases where somebody comes to the polling locations, believes they're eligible to vote. We can't confirm that by the records we have between our records, our voting records, and Albany County's voting records. So instead of saying you can't vote, what we allow them to do is vote by paper ballot. So they will complete a paper ballot, they will put it in an envelope that will be sealed and set aside. So it won't be counted that evening. But what we'll do on Friday is we'll go back, we won't open them, but we'll, again, review the information that they provided in terms of their address and so on, and do another double check between our boundaries and with Albany County, we confirm with them, too, if they have them on their records or not. And if, in fact, they are eligible to vote after this additional second check, we will open them and count those ballots. If, however, we can't determine that they are eligible voters, they will get a letter, we won't open it, and they'll get a letter back saying that they would need not to be an eligible voter for the, for the vote, and receive that information via mail.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 9-0.
Next, we have a resolution to approve an application for the refund of real property taxes for the 2021-22 school year.
Can I have a motion to approve the application for refund of real property taxes? Blanca, second. Judy, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 9-0.
Next is a resolution to approve the award of bids for private transportation services. And in the materials is, is the recommendation, the entire award is made to Raja Group, who's the lowest responsible, that are meeting specifications.
Can I have a motion to approve the contract? Gloria, second. Blanca. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries 9-0.
And my last item this evening is to recognize some donations that came to the school district. First, we received a percussion kit from Julie and John Petty, and we also received a trumpet from Mary Schmitz.
Can I have a motion to approve the donations? Judy, second. Nate, any questions or comments? Just thank you for the donations, for the instruments. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 9-0. Thank you, Neil. Next, we have Superintendent Action. Dr. Wiles?
I have just one item tonight, and it is pending a discussion in executive session after the regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have Board President Action. Letter A is the appointment of workers for the bond referendum vote. Can I have a motion to approve the appointment of workers for October 7th bond referendum? Nate, second. Judy, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 9-0. Next, we have a Board, Board of Ed Policy Adoption. You can see there's a list of policies A through F. Can I have a motion to approve the set of policies? Kim, second. Nate, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 9-0. Next, we'll move on to Board Committee Reports. We'll start with Communications.
We have not met since the last meeting. We have a meeting scheduled for the 13th at 4:30.
Okay. I'm just curious, if you, I guess, I know there's going to be an exit poll for the, the vote. Is, will we all get the results, or Communications see that? I forgot how that, how that works.
Well, we actually worked with Bosse's to do the tabulations of it.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure what the turnaround time will be. We may not have it by the time the committee meets. So eventually, everybody gets it, and we post it to the website.
Yeah. Thank you. Business practices?
We have not met. We were scheduled to, and then we had to postpone our meeting so that Mr. Sanders could be with us. And we're glad to see him back. So we haven't scheduled it yet, but it will be coming up later.
Okay, thanks. Audit?
To channel Barb, you see our fruits of our work today. So we're working on setting up another meeting in a month and a half or so, two months.
Thanks, Kelly. Policy?
There's been meetings, so we're waiting for an approval.
Yes. And then we have DEI?
I'll go with that one, too. We, lots of meetings. We had a meeting on the 20th of September, kind of a regroup and reset meeting, and everybody was out doing their committee meetings as well. Trying to remember what was discussed at each of them, but.
I think we introduced Matt, then.
Yeah, we introduced Mr. Pension out to the committee.
So it was kind of a regroup, some discussion about term limits, and I think there's some information out for us to take a look at that, at least the members that are on the board. Had to move forward with that. We talked about our new, or was making a selection for a new committee member. Oh, yep, you want to talk, isn't that the?
Ben.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that, since we're talking about committees now. So Ben, it was on DEI, and he was also on policy. And so, Kim, I don't know if those are the committees that you would like to join, or what would you prefer?
I would love that.
Both of those?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And, well, do you remember what school he has, his layout?
Ben had the high school.
PTA.
Yeah.
PTA.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Kim?
Oh, yeah, I have two kids there anyways.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's my question, if you're gonna be at the Pine Bush PTA meeting already, I think a whole lot of sense for both of us to be there. I mean, I'll take, I mean, I was the backup for the high school anyways.
If you, I mean, if.
It's a, I mean.
I have, I have no problem with that either way.
So you wanna take the high school, Nate, and then Kim take Pine Bush?
Sure.
We can spread ourselves out a little bit.
Yeah.
And then I'll just back up, we could switch the backups on that.
Okay, great.
And I think there was, so there's an opening for, um, a teacher that I think we're working through that. And there's the board member one, and I know there was some interest from some other, I think from Blanca as well, so we kinda had to decide.
I withdrew.
You did?
Just because of my, with the booster pods and everything, my vaccination schedule is like picked up.
So Kim could join then.
I think Kim would be a great addition.
Right, so there's, so we'll, we'll discuss that at the next meeting, which is next week, on the 12th.
Twelve.
Next week, already.
And I think on the 13th, I remember reading, is when the applications for the teacher position or educator.
No, it's, I, I went through Friday.
Okay.
Because what'll have to happen is it'll come back to this board to review.
Right, so.
So it'll be ready for the November meeting.
So there's a lot of moving parts.
Yes, there are.
With DEI at the moment. So I'm sure we'll have more things next week to report on, Tuesday night.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Public comment number two, do we have anyone to, thank you. And board issues, ideas, and sharing?
I have three things. I'm gonna be fast, I promise. Um, these are all things that parents asked me specifically to bring up. So, um, the first one is a public comment that we received on 8/27 regarding the senior who was cut from the soccer team due to not having played junior year as presented by the email. And, um, they have not received any kind of response from the board or from the district. And would appreciate some follow-up, but additionally, would like me to share that they have found this stressful and disheartening because, um, they feel like in general, parents are under the belief that if they write to the board and especially if they make, take the time to make a public comment, which can sometimes be difficult to make, that they're expecting that there will be some kind of response and they feel like they've been in limbo for a long time. So, um, I, I said I would mention that. I'm not sure, Marie, if you wanna speak to that or if there's any kind of follow-up.
Um, I, I will personally follow up with Mrs. DiMartino.
Okay, that would be great, thank you. Um, it's become a point of stress for the student too, which is really unfortunate. Okay, and then the other issue is I've had 17 parents reach out to me about the lunch situation. Uh, you may recall that I was concerned about the lunch situation before. I think that's probably why these folks reached out to me specifically, because I had said I was concerned about it. Um, they're concerned about the lack of social distancing, also a disparity in which some, uh, students are able to eat outdoors, but others don't have that opportunity. It's sort of like if they're lucky, some kids get to eat outside and some kids don't. I certainly wouldn't wanna penalize the kids that get to eat outdoors because a teacher will take them. But nonetheless, that's what I've been asked to bring to your attention, is there is concern that this is a virus that spreads faster and easier. Yet, not only have we decreased the social distancing, but now we have a situation where kids are unmasked and laughing and talking and in some cases no longer have assigned seating. Those were the concerns, concerns raised to me. We're a couple weeks in, Marie. I, I think we would have seen by now if transmission had actually occurred in the cafeterias to some extent. And to my knowledge, it has not, am I incorrect?
I have not personally done the contact tracing.
Okay.
Um, but I would say that the issues where we have, um, with quarantining and contact tracing are more related to buses than they are to, um, cafeterias. But to my knowledge, I don't know of any examples of transmission at all.
And I very much kept that on my radar, I was very skeptical of that piece. So I don't know if there's any way you could maybe follow up and let us know or just ask the principals to sort of keep an eye out on that, because parents are very concerned, myself being one of them. But I've been surprised that that hasn't been a problem yet. Now that being said, with kids for the winter months not being able to go outside and more, and capacity increasing, again, I'm concerned. So I'll put that on everybody's radar. Uh, and then the last thing, well, the buses were, was one of them, so I took that off. Um, I did wanna speak to the Tech Valley High situation. We got that public comment today and you may recall that one of my first interactions with this board was as a parent who wrote in saying that their child had not been selected for Tech Valley High. And the response I got from you, Marie, was that the board was hoping or feeling that, um, kids shouldn't wanna leave, that we should just make this, make the experience here at Gilderlin be equivalent to the experience at Tech Valley High. So I just wanna say that I agree with the person that wrote that letter. I think we need to open up the opportunity to more peoples, I see how, to more students. I see how that's a loss for us to lose students to go to Tech Valley High. But we're not offering the same thing that Tech Valley High is offering. Here today, we're not, and so I think we need to offer that opportunity to more people. My daughter, um, was really devastated because unfortunately, she didn't find out it was a lottery until later in the game. And so I think we also need to be clear to students that it's not about how hard you work, it's literally luck of the draw. And so if you're putting all your eggs in that basket and it doesn't happen, you will feel really, really bad. So I think we need to make that abundantly clear to folks. And I hope, we're talking now three or four years after I wrote this letter to the board, I hope that in the future, now we're dealing with a lot, we can offer programming similar to Tech Valley High or some kind of alternative, some kind of creative alternative, so that's it.
I, I have a question though on that. Tell me. Every year, there's not the same, like, sometimes there are more students who are interested in other years that are, that are not, right? Like, it depends on just the group? And we're paying, we pay, right, for students to go?
Yes, it's a tuition, um, arrangement with Tech Valley. And for all the time I've been here, we've had budgeted for one per ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, and done the lottery in eighth grade. And we've had wide variation in the level of interest from one or two students to as many as 12 or 13. I think, Blanca, your year was one of the.
Yeah.
Busier years. And then over time, we've had students come and go from the program. Sometimes they wanna return back here, sometimes they move away. You know, we have tried to work with, with Tech Valley to keep the four slots. Um, at one point, we, we had a couple students in the same grade because we didn't have someone in another grade because someone moved in, I mean, it's always fairly convoluted. If we were to, um, increase the number of slots, it would, it would be part of the budget conversation that Neil has foreshadowed already tonight.
That's about $16,000.
First, first student.
Yes.
Per year, right?
Per year, yes.
That's sixteen times four.
Times four.
Yeah.
Do students ever wanna go, like, so if it's one per year, like, if they're junior and they wanna go their senior year? Does that make?
No, the idea is you, you get in the lottery and the end of eighth grade, and then you go nine, 10, 11, 12.
Okay.
Um, and that's why sometimes people move or we've had students move in from another district and they were already in Tech Valley and we didn't wanna make them not go. So we've, one year, um, they gave buy one, get one free and we took advantage of that. So we've done all kinds of variations on a theme.
I just have one question also about, um, like, the testing situation and how is that, do, I guess I should say, the COVID testing? And how, how that's going?
Um, well, it's a daily conversation. Um, right now, we have a little testing subcommittee. And our plan is to begin testing unvaccinated employees who are required to be tested in order to be eligible to work starting Thursday, October 14th. Um, we have been, uh, spent the last two weeks gathering responses from all of our employees to either indicate that they have been vaccinated and then provide proof of that, the card, or indicate that they're not. Um, as of today, we, um, had about 89 people who have not responded. And we had, I think, about 59 who did respond and said, to say they weren't vaccinated. So right now, our plan is to begin next Thursday to do the testing in all seven of our buildings, possibly also in transportation. We'll be sending letters to everybody. I'm hopeful to do it this Thursday that explains how they need to create a, um, a profile within this platform. We're working with a group called Quadrant Biosciences. Um, they'll need to do that, they'll need to go for the testing. It is a pool test, um, with a cheek swab kind of thing. Um, once we collect the specimens, and right now, our plan is for our nurses to do the employees. Those get put together in a, in a bag of between two and 12, um, samples and then they get shipped off to the lab. We get results back in 24 to 48 hours. So it is quite a production. And when we get this figured out, we will also need to offer, um, pool testing to all students as well.
So when we, when we have that number of the percentage of vaccinated faculty, staff, students, I don't know if we can have students, but can we post that, like I've seen on other district websites where they share the, the vaccination rates?
Uh, we can, we don't have the exact rate at this point, we still need to hear from those 89 people who haven't.
If they don't respond, do we assume they're unvaccinated?
Yes, because the way the determination is written from the commissioner is that, um, employees are subject to weekly testing unless they opt out with proof of vaccination. So, um, we're assuming that they are not. And when they get my letter, which I tried to sound friendly and I couldn't do it. Just no way to do it friendly.
I believe that.
You know, they may say, okay, I don't wanna do this every week, and so I'll go ahead and get vaccinated.
Are there people who don't wanna be tested? Is there any pushback about testing?
We've heard some, yes.
Can I just ask a logistics question? And I don't know if I heard this in my day life or through, through the school district, but I had heard that Albany County was gonna be offering testing sites for, for all, all faculty or all staff that need testing. And then my second part of this question is diagnostic testing for students that are excluded from school. Have you heard anything about that?
I have, so, um, every county received quite a substantial amount of federal aid in order to implement testing in the schools. And different counties are doing it differently. Saratoga County has put together testing teams and they're showing up in schools and doing the testing and driving away. Albany County isn't doing that, so they are providing the support. They helped us order the tests and connected us with the training. Um, but we need to put our teams together and do it, do it. Um, I have learned that this new test that we will be using, it's not a binex, it's a PCR test, can at some point, um, be used to do exactly what you described, which is to test a symptomatic student or staff member and send it off to the lab in its own bag with the word diagnostic written on it. One of the things that we have to be really mindful of is the capacity of our nurses. Um, they're already, you know, I worry about them, they're doing great work. So we are looking at hiring a floating nurse, we're looking at contracting out for nurses to assist with all of this. Because I think it would be great to be able to get those results back quicker because the turnaround time, if you just go out into the community to get a test, is very variable, but on the long side.
Yeah, I think Gilderlin's done a great job, but Albany City's really struggled with this. And it's really an equity issue in terms of getting kids back to school. For exactly that reason. The turnaround time to get into the doctor's office, to get into the urgent care center, to get into a commercial pharmacy for testing is abysmal.
Yes.
Um, so something like that would be really helpful.
Yep, so it's, it's on the horizon.
I have one more question, sorry.
It's okay.
I, um, I just wanted to ask, when Mike Glasser mentioned the crossing guard, and that would really be for this school year, right, because of the issues with the, the coming and going? So do we have funds to, to hire someone to do that? I don't even know, like, what that, like, is it part, like, I don't know anything about that, what that job entails, but in terms of if that's going to help at the middle school? And if, if that's what Mike Glasser's saying, like, can we do that? Do we have any funds for that?
Well, I think federal funds would be appropriate.
Cause of COVID, what we're trying to do with, with our transportation and our parents bringing children to school. So I think it would certainly apply in that regard. Uh, crossing guards, uh, there's some legal ramifications. We can't hire a crossing guard, at least from what I've looked at so far. This, we would have to contract with the police agency. I don't know, we're gonna start with Gilderlin to see if, if they have, uh, trained school crossing guards or not. If not, we'll go to the county and then probably the state. But, uh, we have to work with one of those organizations who will supply the crossing guard and then pay that organization to do that. So, uh, we're in the process of working through that, those logistical steps.
Okay, oh, so you're looking into the logistical part of it already?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Do you, would we need to approve that or can you just do that or?
Well, it would just be a contract, so, um, much as likely we have contracts with other agencies. So we would be contracting with Gilton Police Department or the Albany County Sheriff's Department or State Police. Uh, we would have to have an agreement with them. They employ the person, they will train the person, and then bill us for the services that they provide.
I'm just trying to think of a timeline, I don't want us to have to wait until the next meeting if it's something that can happen faster, but.
Uh, I don't think it's gonna be fast.
It's not that fast, okay.
Well, I think it's great that if the COVID funds could be used for that, if people are driving their kids, I didn't think about that aspect, so. That's great. Uh, okay, any other board issues, ideas, and sharing? Nate?
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, I've actually held off on this for a while because we've had kind of bigger fish to fry for the last couple of months. But I did, was, a student spoke to me about asking the board about putting together, this student, this senior, she was here tonight, which made me remember that I hadn't brought it up and been waiting to bring it up. She is interested to know whether the, and apparently other districts do that, if we could set up a day, I don't know what it's called, where seniors can go back to their original elementary school to visit. I, I, it, to me, it seemed like an easy thing, I spoke to people that know these things and the logistics is pretty hectic. But I'm bringing this forward, she's interested. Basically, it's an opportunity for seniors at the high school to go back to their elementary school, Gilderlin, Altamont, whatever, per day, just to basically walk the halls, see their teachers. It allows the students that are in those elementary schools to kind of see where they're going to be in whatever, 10, 12 years. I, I understand there's a lot of logistics that would have to kind of be worked out, especially now considering everything. But, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think it's something that's, uh, you can't consider at least. And I know that there's a lot of other districts do do it in the area. I, you know, I can't remember, I think, you and Eric Shen or some other districts in, in our area do do it. So I, I think it's something that would be fun, certainly a tradition that we could start, uh, if not this year at some point, to kind of give these kids, uh, something, something. So I just, I'm bringing that forward now just so we can kind of get the ball rolling. And I'll, I'll assist in whatever way I can to kind of figure it out. But, uh, I wanted to bring that forward, kind of in more non-COVID testing, vaccination, bond, busing, something a little, I guess. Pleasant, thank you.
Maybe that can be discussed, I feel like at PTA Council, that would be probably appropriate, right?
Actually, yeah, that would definitely be something that we could cover there.
Then, you know, from there, it can go out to all the PTAs, so, yeah, we can talk about that at PTA Council then.
I, I do worry just a little bit about students that didn't start at an elementary school here. You know, and if that could be alienating to them.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, yeah, there's a lot, there's obviously a lot of things that have to be worked out, I think. I don't, I mean, but it does sound like a lot of other districts, maybe we could reach out to some other districts and see how do, how do you handle this? How do you, how do you do it, you know? Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of, I don't know, moving parts there, but I'm bringing the idea forward.
Alright, can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry Barb, I didn't see your hand.
A question for Marie, she had mentioned the positivity project, you know, in her updates, and I had asked her earlier today, because I'm trying to come on, watch her, how did we get the project, how much it costs, and does it come out of the federal funds? And is there any way that we can tie it in to what Matt Pinchot's knowing? Because they seem like there'd be a nice synchrony there with him being part of this positivity project as well. Has anybody given any thought to that, or?
Yes, yeah. So the work around the positivity project, I think primarily came from our social emotional learning subcommittee that was created in the spring of 2020, as they were thinking about how best to support our learners. And members of that committee did research, reached out to other parts of the state, and learned about the positivity project. And, you know, we had guests come and did a whole bunch of work. Right now, we have implemented K8, but the high school is also looking at it. We actually purchased this program through, it's one of the BOCs, and it's Keoga Anadaga BOCs out in Syracuse area. It's just under $28,000 a year, which provides us materials for our entire district and training and supporting materials, and, and because it's through the BOCs, it is adable at roughly 50%, so we're actually paying about half of that. And I am pretty sure it is funded through one of our federal grants or title grants, and I, I didn't do that bit of the homework. I don't know if Damian is there and he remembers, but it's funded through some of our special grants.
I believe it's under the First Cares Act.
The First Cares Act, okay. Thank you. So, and the DEI part, thank you. So we have noticed that there's a lot of parallels between the characteristics that are embodied in the positivity project and the work we're, we're doing around DEI and our three definitions. I think Andy Genovae's pointed that out, I don't know what, at some meeting, and so Matt is very much involved in, will continue to be involved, you know, as we go forward to weave, weave that work together over time.
Is that it Barb?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, you're welcome. Can we? Okay, thank you. Can I have a second? Nate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes nine zero. Thank you, everybody.